Okay, I'm here. So, we will have establish a corps first, if that's okay, Dr. Sevier?
I'll call the roll, Dr. Gentry.
Here.
Dr. Gentry is present, Ms. Elrod?
Present.
Ms. Elrod is present, Ms. Spearing? Ms. Spearing?
Present.
Ms. Spearing is present, Ms. Bugs?
Present.
Ms. Bugs is present, Ms. Bush?
Present.
Ms. Bush is present, Ms. Player Peters?
Present.
Ms. Player Peters is present, Ms. Pupa Walker? Don't believe she's logged on yet, Ms. Frog?
Present.
Ms. Frog is present, Ms. Shepherd?
Here.
Ms. Shepherd is present, Madam Chair, you have eight members present.
Okay, great, we have established a corps. So, excuse me, we will move on to our governance issues. First on the list is Metro Schools Reimagine, Ed Program Closure and School Consolidation Recommendations, and I would imagine that this would fall under the purview of Dr. Alabato. Is she online with us?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much. Yesterday, we held three successful virtual community meetings to present this plan and answer questions from parents, faculty, and interested stakeholders. I want to acknowledge the misgivings and concerns that many are feeling right now. Whether we had three or 30 community meetings, I think we still have a similar misgivings and concerns because the fact of the matter is that we have not yet been able to succeed in turning around all of our underperformed schools despite many different strategies along the way. As a graduate of Metro Schools, as a teacher administrator, now the director, I'm committed to the success of all MNPS. As a White's Creek resident, I want the best for my neighborhood and for my cluster, the cluster that I live in, so that my children will also have a great school to attend when they come of age. Our budget challenges have accelerated our timeline for implementation, but the fact that we have significantly under-enrolled schools predominantly in North Nashville is not anything new to anyone who has been involved in public schools. Whether it is gentrification causing families to move to other parts of town or out of Davidson County, or the decision by families to exercise a choice out of their cluster because they feel that it is best for their children, the reality is that we have to make hard decisions about how best to allocate our resources in overhead or in education. I prefer to invest in education. Our plan comes after years of study and conversation, but it doesn't take the sting out of the necessary action we must take. We do have a plan, Metro Schools Reimagine, which I and our district staff have been working hard on for months to bring out to the community. It is not a window dressing or a patch. I hope it will ultimately transform education and academic outcomes for many of our students. We will reimagine our academic approach to teaching students with the understanding that every child has the potential to achieve greatness with the right resources, academic and social-emotional, and parental and community involvement. We will further update, revise, and expand our reimagine plans with the community on our minds and at the table, giving students, families, and teachers a clear vision for what it means to live or work in a cluster. There is no cavalry coming to solve our challenges. We must do it ourselves, and I'm committed to doing that because the last thing I ever want to see is another one of our schools taken over by the state of Tennessee. We have a more responsibility to provide all of our children with a great education. We won't get there overnight, and we may never reach the finish line, but we can't slow down or give up. We must keep pressing forward, every one of us. So, Madam Chair, with those remarks, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. At this point, I'm really unsure. I think I'll go ahead and open it up for commentary around the clusters and closure plan. We do have a one-page consolidation study in our packet, so if anyone would like to chime in on that, I'd welcome that at this time.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Spearing?
Yes, I'm sorry, my camera is not working.
Okay.
Yes. Consolidations are never easy. As a board, we know that. As a teacher, a retired educator, when I was at Corral How and we closed that school, it was a very painful experience. And, but now, we are in an unprecedented time. COVID-19 has really taken us aback, and plus the fact that so many of our constituents and parents do appreciate choice, including charter schools, and we have to close schools when they're under-enrolled because they cost the district too much money and impact our other students. To pass this consolidation will take us from 41% to 60% utilization to 83% to 92% utilization. And the result of lower enrolled schools will allow us to reallocate resources to enhance student success in our schools, and these are the students who need the most support. Thinking about Cone School, we know that we certainly don't want that school to go to the ASD, and that's what will happen if that school stays open. There are trauma-informed specialists and social workers at the high schools that will help our students who have been supported at the Cone School. It's not a good thing, it's not a fun thing to ever close schools, but it's certainly hard to close schools during a global pandemic. Nevertheless, we have to face reality here. We have a mission to accomplish. Appreciate all the emails and phone calls that we have received and I have received from, especially Cone and Jolton. But, in terms of Jolton, we, in the Metro Schools Reimagine Plan, there are clear usefulnesses for that particular school. We plan to put 5th grade in the elementary school in Jolton, not this coming school year, but the year after that. And then, we are planning from Metro Schools Reimagine is to make the middle school a K-8 elementary school and middle school. That's going to take some time and some resources to adjust that building so that it will accommodate kindergarten through 8th grade. So, we know that this is hard, but this is our job, and I am going to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spearing. Would anybody else like to make some comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Hi, this is Jeannie, sorry, just barely missed a roll call, but I'm here. I just want to say that, you know, all of us have received numerous emails from families, from community members about these schools, you know. I'm disappointed, like many, that we can't have public participation and let people come and speak to us directly. I know that is an important part of our process. I do want to say that, you know, 60% or two out of three kids in the White's Creek cluster opt for schools outside of that cluster, and many of them, the majority, stay in MNPS schools. And so, the fact of the matter is, we have just gotten to a point where we have lost the confidence of families in that community, and I think it's on all of us to rebuild that confidence and that trust and to do the authentic engagement that's required. And I know that there are going to be some painful conversations and difficult next steps on so many fronts for all of us. And so, appreciate the hard work that Dr. Battle and her team have put into preparing the data and really examining all the options. And I do hope that we continue to do a really good job communicating with all the parents and families and staff in these schools, and that we make the best possible use of these buildings to serve that community in the best possible way. And so, not an easy decision, but I'll be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pupa Walker. So, go ahead.
You can speak first, it's Amy, I just had some comments.
Who does?
Amy, this is Amy, but go ahead and speak first if you want.
No, you go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, I couldn't get my microphone unmuted, sorry.
Okay.
Um, I just want to say that what we're doing today is a direct consequence of charter school expansion in Nashville. This is, we are following a playbook that has played out nationwide in different cities. And what happens is that when we open a large number of charters, when any city does, enrollment is going to decrease in the zone schools and the traditional schools that are served by the district. And so, now, we are finding ourselves trying to fund two separate competing systems, school systems, with the same pot of funding. And we all know that the pot was already not large enough, it was already insufficient. But because of state law, the charters are always going to have the advantage because they are funded first, we have to pay them. The cuts will always have to come from our traditional neighborhood schools. And so, the option is for cities to close schools that are under-enrolled because of movement out of those schools, and that's the playbook. So, that's where we are. In Tennessee, as in a lot of other states, we are also dealing with ASD, and we know that all of these are priority schools, and we're under the threat of charter takeover through the ASD. And this year, we know that charter growth in Nashville is going to increase by 6.5 million. Now, we're trying to set, close neighborhood schools to save 3.5 million, and this is exactly what some of us have tried to work toward about for many years now. And in fact, this is the vision of the charter sector, it's called disruption. That's a term that they've borrowed from the business world. And the charters have disrupted the markets in Nashville, as I like to say, and the markets here are children and neighborhood schools. So, we are now paying for the expansion that we have, these expansions that we have authorized. Also, I want to say that when the charter, state charter authorizer law passed many years ago, I believe it was in 2013, 2014, I spent a year up at the legislature. I was hustling, trying everything I could do to stop that from passing. I testified in front of the legislature, I spoke to a lot of lawmakers up there, and that was Carl Dean's vision. He pushed hard for a state charter authorizer law that would remove local control of schools. And so, now, we are sitting here, we don't have adequate funding, we have a funding emergency in Nashville and otherwise nationwide. We don't have, we don't have local control, and we have money going toward our charter sector while our traditional schools close. So, I just feel like the chickens have come home to roost, and I hope that this board will think long and hard about opening new charter schools in the future because of exactly this problem. It will just continue, we cannot fund two competing sets of school system from the same pot of money. And then, finally, I just want to add that none of this is Dr. Battle's fault, she has sort of inherited the situation that we're now in, and she's dealing with some decisions the board made many years ago, and again, an emergency that we were not anticipating. She did manage to cut charter funding for the year, which I was surprised at because we've never been able to do that again before, but I do think it's fair that if the traditional schools suffer cuts, the charters should suffer the same cuts. And I think there's a lot of concern in the community that this is, we are somehow just trying to sell these buildings and make money, or we are, you know, we're going to use this opportunity to open more charter schools, and that is not the case. I didn't know if Dr. Battle wanted to speak to that, but I think, you know, that she is, Dr. Battle is dealing with the reality of where we are. The heart of the conversation, the charter conversation all these years really has been about equity, about how we ensure that every child has access to an excellent education, and we are creating greater inequities in our system because we are not thoughtfully implementing choice, and we continue to fund charters over other schools, and that's not right. So, anyway, I was just going to invite Dr. Battle, she wanted to speak to school closures or any plans to open, you know, use this, please closures as an opportunity to open charter schools, and also, after that, I just had a couple of specific remarks about a couple of these closures. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Amy, for those questions, and certainly, to your point, we have been hard at work looking at potential scenarios for the building usage, ultimately to benefit the communities that are being served where the consolidations may happen. All of those scenarios include options for our continued district curriculum planning, utilization for central office and support services supports for students, as well as just expansions we're seeing particularly in our SCIF programming. We've already mentioned the Jolton scenario where we've already identified a potential scenario of K-8, again, all pending board approval. None of these spaces are intended to just sit vacant without usage, the board will ultimately decide on the use, and none of them currently are planned to go to the charter sector. So, I just want to be clear about that, we've laid out many different scenarios for each of the buildings, including making sure that we honor the legacies that do exist with several of the buildings. So, we will continue to honor those, and we will continue to utilize the building spaces to benefit the district and the communities that are being served.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Anybody else with any comments?
Can I ask two specific questions, Anna?
Sure.
Same again. Okay, so, two things. On the Cone School closure, the initial concern was that we were going to somehow close down the entire building and sell the building, and I think we have allayed the concerns around that. The concern that I've gotten recently from teachers and people that are involved at the school there is that we make sure that we are providing adequate services for these kids that have high needs in our zone schools when we move them back to the zone schools, and I wondered if Dr. Battle might comment briefly on some of the services we're providing the students from the Cone Learning Center.
Yes, thank you for that question as well. It was a question that also came up yesterday in our town hall meeting, and during that meeting, our Director of Counseling Services as well as other support services leaders were on the call and spoke specifically to our plans in transitioning students. They've already started to reach out to students and give them supported plans and ways to gauge their interest if this vote would move towards closing the Cone Learning Center. So, they spoke very specifically to the individualized plans for every student, making sure that we have a personalized transition plan, ensuring that the appropriate resources are available to students at their new school, which could be a zone school, it could be one of our Simon Youth Foundation schools as well as some others, given the fact that many of the students could possibly meet their graduation requirements if they obtain the necessary credits. We've already identified a number of students who could meet their graduation requirements over the summer, and so, we want to continue to support them. We also have a team working on identifying professional learning for the receiving teachers, schools, counselors, social workers, those who will be supporting students as well. So, they've already begun to create a very robust plan to make sure that the students transition well and that they have the necessary supports and resources at their new school.
Okay, thank you. And then, my last question, real quick, is on Jolton. I'm getting feedback from that community that there is an interest in a K-8 school there, and I know that's one of the options. So, I guess, first question is, you know, if we were to delay this vote for a week or two, would that be problematic? And second, so that we could have more community feedback on that, and second, if we have to go ahead and take the vote today, if it's beneficial for us to go ahead and move forward, could we plan some community meetings up in Jolton just to discuss the usage of that building and the possibility of a K-8?
Yes, absolutely. Part of the plans that have already been provided well in advance of getting that specific question today was looking at the scenario of a K-8 building utilization in Jolton. So, that's already one of the potential scenarios. That comes with a lot of study, that comes with really stabilizing the enrollment, the programs and the outcomes for students in their current setting. Phase two of the work with Jolton particularly is for elementary to return, excuse me, 5th grade to return to the elementary school. And so, with that, that'll give us some additional data on the feasibility of truly building out a K-8 model. Also, a part of those previous plans that are ongoing are additional community meetings. We did host the three town hall meetings on yesterday, and very soon, in the next few days, we would like to get out additional communications for families for them to continue to be a part of this Metro Schools Reimagine work. And I would like to also specifically call out that one of the uniform strategies in these three clusters, as well as the clusters that will also engage in this work, is for a network of internal and external leaders, which includes our community leaders, our parents, guardians, to be a part of the planning and the reimagining and investing in all of our schools. So, those community meetings will be announced very soon, and they will be ongoing as we continue to improve outcomes in all of these clusters.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frog, and Dr. Battle. So, we have been having these discussions about closing under-enrolled schools through several iterations of what is now imagine, reimagine. It was called MNPS Next, it was called several things in the seven years I've been on the board, so it's not a new discussion about closing under-enrolled schools, no matter where they are. And to me, part of being responsible with the monies that are given to us is to make sure that we don't have schools that are under-enrolled, because that's not, and I hate to use this term, it's not a good return on investment for our monies that we have a school at 39% or 45% enrollment. We need to make sure that these schools are enrolled so that they, instead of, so that they don't end up costing us even more money because they're under-enrolled. We have not had a robust discussion on the board floor as to what to do with these buildings, as Dr. Battle mentioned. We do want to honor the legacy for whom these buildings are named, and that it definitely is on our radar to make sure that we do that. I'm sure that we will have those robust discussions after this plan has passed. So, this is nothing that is new, and like you, like several of my colleagues, I have received numerous emails, especially from the residents of Jolton and around the Cone School. So, that, you know, we hear them, and we want to make sure that we do right by them. We don't want to pretend that they don't exist, that's unfair, because they do exist, and they're an important part of our district. So, we want to make sure that they are heard. And to your question, what are your questions, Ms. Frog? We really do need to pass this today because we do have our budget meeting with the council on Thursday. So, if we can, after the fact, then, you know, have community meetings with the folks in Jolton and get their input on what they would like to see in their community around what education looks like, and, you know, what we need to do to help them retain students instead of losing them to school choice. So, you know, we, you know, this has been a really good discussion, and I'm glad that, you know, we had it, but we do need to move forward, and I should have asked for a motion prior to the discussion, I did not, but if there is no further discussion from any of my colleagues, I would entertain a motion to accept A1.
This is Rachel Lan, I have some discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
This is Bugs.
Okay.
Sorry, I had my camera on, I was trying to follow the protocol that we had set to get in line. So, I have some similar conversations, some similar notes as my past colleagues, and I'm trying to weed through them in my notes to not continue to duplicate some of it. I do want to say, we have been talking about closing schools that have low utilization rates. Unfortunately, we have not been specific about what schools would be impacted. And so, I understand why families feel like this is new information for them and that they haven't had enough time to make family planning decisions or educational decisions or whatever it might be. They feel rushed in this decision or this information being given to them. So, I have a question before I make all my comments, and it is, I know that we had the town halls last night to talk to families about what the new school will look like for them and kind of what the plan is. What have we done before last night with these families?
Thank you for that question, Ms. Elrod. Casey, are you on the line? Do you mind responding initially to that question just in previous conversations? Of course, this is a conversation that actually goes back to at least 2016 with regards to us looking at our capacity in which several different specific school scenarios have been discussed and weighed and studied again. But I'm going to let Casey respond first with some of the specifics regarding community meeting dates. Casey?
Yes, I'm happy to answer that for you. Ms. Player Peters had asked us earlier today to give her some of this information, so it's fresh on our minds. We did start this community conversation in 2017 with several meetings mostly focused on grade configuration. We talked about K-5, we talked about K-8. We broke into small groups and, you know, really had in-depth conversations with parents, and then collected that data, presented it to the board right before the start of the school year. And then, going into the fall, we did host another set of community meetings to let the public know what the outcomes were of those conversations. And then, coming into 2018, we did have another set of community meetings, and these were very far-reaching, and we had a lot of them. I don't know if anyone came up with a final count, but we did come up with 10 known community meetings that we held in the northwest quadrant, and those were focused on equitable use of resources as well as, you know, looking at consolidations. Now, to your point, Ms. Elrod, we did not mention which schools we were considering closing, but that was kind of the background for the conversation of now introducing the schools.
Thank you. So, my concern is, since we did not specifically tell anyone, I think you could deduct what schools it might be if you had the ability and the knowledge of how to get utilization rates. I know that we talk about them occasionally in board meetings, so I know that that information is available, it's just do they have the knowledge or ability to get to that information if they so choose to. So, my concern is that they were not, they didn't attend those meetings, though we had a lot of them, and even if they did, they didn't think that it pertained to their school for whatever reason. And it's my, I'm not going to pretend like I'm a part of the District One communities because I'm not, but from the history that I know and the people I know and the people I speak to, there is an overwhelming feel a lot of times, particularly within our schools, that things are done to those communities, not with them or for them. And so, I want to make sure that if we didn't have as much notice as we would have liked to give them, that we need to kind of retrofit that as best as we can, and that there's going to be some follow-up. So, I know Ms. Frog asked specifically about Jolton and what kind of follow-up would be done there, and I'm glad that that's going to be of follow-up would be done there. And I'm glad that that's going to be done. But specifically for particularly like Lillard and Buena Vista, what kind of follow-up are we doing with those families and explaining to them what's happening with their school and what next year's school year will look like? On that note, I want to also make sure that whatever is being communicated, that we don't just really focus on the reason we're doing this is for budgeting reasons. I understand why families, I don't want to say they don't care about that, but that's not their concern. Their concern is their children. And so what's in it for them and what's going to be the positives that we focus on and that we can promise to try to have for them with these consolidations?
I'll take that question. And, and let me be very clear about timeline as well. So as Casey has mentioned, the many years of community meetings and research that has gone into this, the global pandemic and the budget scenario, I mean, definitely has accelerated the timeline as we're thinking about the resources that we have and the true outcomes we want for our students. In addition to that, as we've talked about in timeline for, for communications, the uniform strategy across every cluster and every school is that community sessions and engagement are critical to this work. And so we've already planned for that timeline. And those communications that will be going out this week will involve every one of these clusters and impacted schools. So that's just not isolated to Jolton and to Cone. And another point I do want to make, if you, if you think back to 2016 when this work started, I'm sure conversations started even well before then to get us there. It started with the M P S Next work, which was solely based on building utilization, enrollment, and budget. And we immediately, over the last year, began to shift that conversation and really think about how we're going to invest in our schools. Taking a step back to look at and leverage our, our resources, our best practices to realize outcomes for our students and families. It, it so happened that part of the reimagine work included having to look at our learning environments and how we can maximize that space. But this whole conversation shifted to more of what is it that we should be providing to our students and families? What are they communicating to us that they need? Which is why the fifth grade reorganization plan, getting fifth grade back into elementary schools is also a part of the plan. So I just want to be clear that part of those community meetings, we did hear from families that they would like to see fifth grade go back into elementary schools. So utilizing all of the previous information and to shift our focus about it being less on budget. I mean, it, it still is a critical matter, but more on what we're trying to do and invest in our students is, is what's at the forefront and really making student-first decisions. So all future engagement, community meetings will cross all clusters in all schools that are impacted.
Okay. And then I guess in the end, I have some similar notes and some similar comments that I'd like to make as Ms. Frogge, actually. And I believe what we're seeing is the fleshing out of a timeline that we've been kind of struggling with on what's going to be the culmination of it. What's going to happen in certain areas where we've had a tremendous amount of charter growth. And unfortunately, it has cannibalized our, our schools over there. And it is deeply heartbreaking for me, particularly for these historically important schools, and also for our families that have really tried to do what we keep asking them to do as a board and stay inside their schools and be involved in their schools and do, do that work. And, you know, it is, it's, it breaks my heart, especially as we're about to vote in, you know, some minutes' time on a budget where we are providing $6.56 million in charter growth while we have to close other schools because of charter growth. And it, it, it is breaking my heart not having a difficult time wrapping my mind around it. But I think the important thing to keep in mind is that we learn from this and that we realize that this doesn't end in District One and that we could, this could happen in any district. And it hap, it's happening across our district and that we need to protect the decreased funding that we are unfortunately getting and potentially will continue to get as our economy continues to rebuild after our crisis that we're all facing. So I appreciate the planning that's gone into it. I want to make sure that we go back and we are really maybe over-communicative with those families as I don't want them to continue to feel like this has been surprising to them. As I can understand why they feel like that's disrespectful. And it validates a lot of the ongoing concerns of that things are not within their consideration, that they have no say-so in those decisions being made. So thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak, Madam Chair.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Elrod. And somebody else had some comments?
Christian, Bugs.
Thank you, Christian. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanted to first start off by thanking those community members who have been very engaged, who have reached out to us to make their voices heard. I appreciate you and I really ask you to stay on this journey with us, to continue to advocate to us, hold us accountable, but also walk with us as we advocate to the mayor, the city and the state for more funding. Because I, well, before I even go into all that, thank you again. But I will say, I've had a lot of families question and say, well, can you promise me that these specific supports or resources will be poured into a Jones since Buena Vista will be merging with them, or will be poured into a White's Creek, or will be poured into a Cumberland or an Alex Green? And I'll say this, I don't know that we're at this point ready to make the promises about what types of supports that are needed or that will be offered, but we know more supports are needed. And by at least offering more funding to the school, those resources can be more, it's more feasible to attain them, right? So I would, in that spirit, I would ask us not to wait on a vote, just because we need to have time to go ahead and assign a principal for these buildings. And we need to be able to have these principals and their entire team look at what our students needs. You, you will certainly have students that have some sort of IAP or other accommodations, and they need to be accounted for. They, they need to be considered. So I think, I, I hate that it's rushed. I hate that, you know, two natural disasters and a pandemic later, we're having to rush through this process. But I would urge us to consider the students. Because at the end of the day, we're trying our best to make sure we're putting people before things. We're putting students before a building. And that, that's not to say that those buildings don't hold weight or nostalgia, or they aren't important to us. We will deal with them. We are not selling them. But right now, we have immediate needs from children, from young people who we've got to deal with and we've got to better support. And I will, you know, all of this to me circles back to a budget, you know? Three years ago, we tried to reallocate funding and we looked at, you know, shifting dollars to the needy schools. And then we as a board weren't the best, the best leaders in saying, hey, we do need to focus on equity. If there are schools that have three and four music teachers, then maybe we need to shift dollars to schools that don't have any math teachers, or we need to shift resources, whatever it was. And we didn't exactly carry the torch the way we should have. But it wasn't just us. It was that we didn't receive the funding from the city that we even asked for, let alone what we needed. And now, again, two natural disasters and a pandemic later, not only have our previous budget woes caught up to us, but now the, this, this, I don't know, impending danger. I mean, because it is a dire situation we're in. This impending danger is causing us to make true shifts in how we support and budget for students. But I want to make this very, very clear. After having been on, after having gone to several different meetings in the White's Creek Cluster over just the past decade, where they've talked about potential school closures and low enrollment, and having been a student in the White's Creek Cluster that went to a magnet school, I'll be honest, it is not the charter schools that are the reason for our low enrollment. It's that parents don't feel like they're getting everything that they, that their children need. If you look at the numbers, if you talk to Dr. Changis, if you knock on doors in Bordeaux, it's not the one or two charter schools that are in Bordeaux. It's the other optional schools. It's the magnet schools that everyone on my street sent their kids to. It's the Hills, Hills Burrows and the Hills, Hill Woods, and really the Akins, the any other school in the district that are optional, that's where Bordeaux families are sending their children. And unfortunately, again, as a board, instead of talking about what parents need to be able to see White's Creek and the White's Creek Cluster as a viable option for their child, we continue to just kind of point the finger and point it somewhere else. We're not, not having conversations about how do we more appropriately staff these buildings? What incentives possibly do we offer for, for teachers who stay there? How do we make sure the community achieves as not just an option, but a mandate in all of those schools? We just don't talk about those things because we just want to keep talking about charters. Now, we'll admit, yes, charters are funded differently than our traditional schools. I, I understand that. But again, if we're only, if we're only pointing the finger at them and saying that the 15% of students that, that are from Bordeaux schools that are choosing charters are the issue, we're forgetting the other 80, 85% that are choosing literally any other optional school in Metro. We, I just, it, it flusters me when we do these things because, again, we never get to the root of the problem. We never talk about, why is it that the, the families that surround Robert E. Lillard likely send their child to another school? That they send their child to a Jones, or an Akin, or a Rosebank? Why, we don't talk about what will keep them at their neighborhood school that's right down the street. And I just asked us, ask us to shift the conversation. I mean, we can, you know, 10 years ago or eight years ago, these charter schools applied and that's cool. We'll, you know, we'll deal with the ones that are not doing what they should be doing. But I, because I want to send my child to my neighborhood school, I want us to be way more focused on resourcing our neighborhood schools, having conversations about what that looks like. And then when we engage parents and families, that we also consider urging them to reach out to the council and mayor. Because what I would love to see the community doing right now is, sure, hold us accountable, make sure that we're engaging them. But I would love to see them engaging the mayor and the council. I would love to see them holding the mayor accountable for not, the mayor accountable for not giving us everything we needed just to keep the lights on in every building. I want to see them, I want to see the community partner with us as we reach out to the council to ask them for any extra funding that they can sign. Because again, I can't tell you specifically, if you're a parent that has a child at White's Creek, I can't tell you specifically what new resource we can put there by, by making these consolidations. Unfortunately, I can tell you that if you don't make these consolidations, children will be hurt. The building won't hurt, but the children will be hurt because they will get far less resources even than they got last year. And let's be clear, when we talk about Bordeaux and we talk about the White's Creek Cluster, or even if you talk about the Pearl Cone Cluster where my son is on and we're merging Buena Vista and Jones, these are predominantly minority schools. These are the schools that have been left behind. Again, not many charter schools in the area, so it's not that. But there's something about these, something about other schools that parents are choosing. So what can we do to make sure that Black and Brown and poor and disenfranchised community members are engaged consistently? But what can we do as a board to make sure we understand that their needs? We understand that this isn't happening in other parts of town. This isn't happening in the East Nashville or West Nashville. It, it's not even happening in the South Nashville because it's so overcrowded. So I think there's so many, there's so many layers to this conversation. But for me, I want to focus on the idea that we've got to focus on the budget as a city and making sure that students and families are actually the priority, actually the priority. Heaven forbid, we actually fund our schools, no matter what corner of the district the school is in. Then I really want to make sure that we are, B, or number two, having conversations about what does it look like to resource a school for what that community needs, not just what conspiracy theories we have or random conversations we want to have on the side.
Thank you, Ms. Bugs. Ms. Elrod? Who spoke?
It was Rachel Lan. I was going to see if I could respond.
Yes, ma'am.
So I was going to say, in response to Christian, excuse me, Ms. Bugs, I, I, I agree with that. I think choice in general, if we just want to take a big umbrella term, is probably a good way of putting it. And I don't disagree. I, I hope that I was clear in some of my comments, and maybe I was not, that we need to be able to communicate what's going to be a different, what's going to be a different maker, what's going to be something that we finally are trying to find a solution to the problem and not just keep putting Band-Aids on whatever the problems might be. And we are listening to those communities and trying to provide a solution to give them the education that they rightfully deserve for their children. And that we don't continue to have these ongoing, difficult conversations with no fix. And so I just wanted to make sure that I was, I was clear, that I don't think it's an easy answer and that we all have a responsibility to those students that we find a solution to help them have the best education inside their neighborhood schools and that we find what's the right fix for that.
Indeed, it is not an easy answer. We have any other comments?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry. This is Sharon.
Yes.
So I do appreciate all the comments that have already been made. And I just want to kind of stretch out that timeline a little bit. We've been starting about 2016. I would say we can go all the way back to 2008. When I first joined the board and the, the district was facing state takeover. And that's how we ended up making the hire of the director of schools that we did as a part of an agreement with the state that they would not take us over. 2009, we got raised to the top dollars through some bills passed under the Obama administration. And then we ended up with money as a result of applying through the grant process. But I will tell you, Ms. Elrod, to your comment, I don't believe that those monies were used to fix the leak. We bought a whole lot of buckets to catch the water, but we didn't fix the leak with them. And so we were not consistent in how, in, in understanding. And we weren't deep into community achieves. And we weren't doing a whole lot around social and emotional learning. So the way those dollars were spent, we're not addressing the challenges that our students bring into our classrooms every day. And so, you know, this is our own version of an epidemic that's been going on for a while. This has been going on for a while. And this is our best chance to put these schools on the path to being successful. So no one is saying that it's a consolidation of schools and then we wash our hands of this and move on to the next issue. It's an ability to put resources in a building and start to have conversations about what are the needs of the students in that building. We have principal and building-level leaders right now who are amazing, but who are so short-staffed and so under-resourced that what they know their students need, they're unable to provide. Because the student-based budgeting model, as it's designed, does not afford them operating dollars to do that. The other thing that we need to be mindful of is that we have administrative costs that are consistent across our schools. So whether that school is knocking it out of the park, or whether that school is in the bottom 5% in the state, the administrative costs associated with each of those school buildings is exactly the same. It's exactly the same. If it's a high school, if it's a middle school, if they're elementary schools. So, you know, we've got a, this is an opportunity for us to not only just be better stewards of our resources, talking from a budget, but this is an opportunity for us to give those teachers who are struggling and, and working hard every day, and those building-level leaders who are being held accountable for those outcomes, is now for us to give them what they need, to get closer to providing them with the resources they need to deliver on those. Ms. Baron spoke, and she made the comment about, about our commitment and our promise. Our mission statement says that we are creating students who are career and college ready. And we're not doing that consistently across the district in every one of our clusters. And we're woefully, we're, we're woefully short. We're woefully short in a lot of the schools that are going to be a part of this consolidation. So this is an opportunity also for us to deliver on that promise. People are not choosing the schools because the schools are not providing the services. It's just that simple. It's just that simple. We can't put, continue to put these numbers up of, of single-digit literacy rates and single, single-digit proficiency in numeracy and expect parents to hold their kids' hands and walk them into the building when they know that that building is not resourced to change that data. And that is what we're trying to do here. The one ask I do have as a result, before we move forward, Dr. Battle, and this would also go to Mr. Henson, is that we, we, when we do the student-based budgeting for these schools, understanding that parents may be, you know, making the choice and there may be some movement that that happens. And I know that we lock those budgets down, that we give a little bit more wiggle room to finalize those budgets for these schools as the numbers start to settle. That would be, that would be my, my, my big ask. Of course, that we follow through on those community meetings, that we are clear to the parents and families how they can be involved in those community meetings and those community committees that we're trying to, to convene, to continue to, to, to create that avenue where parents can be continually engaged as we move forward to on delivering quality education experiences and opportunities for all of our students.
Thank you, Dr. Gentry.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Kind of build on Dr. Gentry's engagement. I think this, my major concern, you know, I've, many of the major concerns that my colleagues have expressed, took with the budgeting, the access to resources, to try to give our students better opportunities to succeed in the way we educate them. And so I don't want to reiterate the comments, but I do agree with many of the comments my colleagues say in regards to the overall effects of school choice within our district and the effect of, you know, budgeting charters, all that stuff. One thing I want, and hopefully we use as a learning lesson, is how we engage our community and our parents, and particularly moving forward. I mean, the comments with Ms. Elrod said about, we've, we've had the overall conversations and I inquired about the number we had, we had about, you know, the consolidation of schools, underutilization of schools, and then the specific plan. Given that we need to be very mindful of how we engage communities and communities, different communities need to be engaged in different ways. And the fact that this, this came kind of at a time, this unprecedented time that we have, that when we move forward from this... have, that when we move forward from this, um, that we really thoughtful about how we engage on specific ideas and specific proposals to communities, engage them in a way that meets them where they are. Um, and that looks different from different communities of how different communities engage traditionally and currently. And I think that's where the frustration that I see, um, and the emotions I see with the communication we've gotten from constituents and from elected officials, um, it's how it's been done. And as we move forward, we're very thoughtful about how we do it, particularly honor the legacy of Judge Lillard and Buena Vista, that, you know, one of the legacies of, you know, Judge Lillard was that, you know, he organized community people to pay the poll tax for, you know, Black officials to be involved in the democratic process. And as we move on to the legacy, that the buildings that we use, how we engage the parents of these students, um, particularly of those we've heard the least from, that are affected the most by this process, that we are very intentional over the next, um, two months of how they're engaged as we go into the system. And that's something I think we have to own, that we need to improve when it comes to very specific things. Um, and I know there's been long conversations, but it's one thing to have a big conversation and it's another thing when it comes a very specific impact to your neighborhood in your district and walking them through that. So I know there's a lot of, um, questions and a lot of ideas that need to be resolved and we need to be processed through as we move through, through this process and given this time and given how all this has come to a paramount, um, during this kind of unprecedented budget, as our mayor has said, um, that we, we, we could be very, um, intentional as the administration, how we engage the elected officials that are also, um, that are also elected official colleagues on the council side and on the mayor's office, um, and the state representatives as in part of the conversation. Also that we honor the legacy of the, you know, the lower schools named after and then the, you know, for the desegregation of Buena Vista, of how we engage in that community, just given the historical context. So, um, I just want to be very mindful of that. That's something, just given my background and my career, just engaging communities, it's not an easy process, particularly as being the administration and we are implementing this and as we are governing this, this is the hard part of governing. When we come to, when the rubber meets the road, we have to make the tough decisions. How we engage the community in those tough decisions is a crucial thing that we must do. Um, and I want to make sure as we move on to this, as we continue this reimagine process, um, and as we continue this evolution, that people understand that the reimagine process is an extension of the Nashville Next. I don't know if that was part of lost in the communications, but also that we have a plan of how to engage the communities and how they need to be engaged at that moment. Because how you engage West Nashville is going to be totally different than you engage North Nashville, how you engage in South Nashville, how you engage in Antioch. Let me know, we are a big county with very distinct, um, communities and we have to be very sensitive how we engage that. And I know my colleagues, Ms. Gentry, Ms. Bush, have done a lot of, um, outreach in the last, you know, last week, and I know it was not an easy task for them to bear, um, given that, you know, this is their district and I want to honor, you know, their work that they're doing, given that they had a lot of communications going on. Um, but I think we as a communicate, we as a district, we as administration, we as a governing board, um, from this moment forward, need to be very mindful of how we engage in the communities to make sure that they don't feel this last thing and they, that they could deduct the dots and deduct what the overall conversation has been over the past decade and how now we can't pass the buck anymore, that we really have to make these tough decisions and really do the due diligence of governance.
Thank you, Ms. Spearing. Anybody else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, I want to, um, just kind of go back through what I've always said before and what works. And I want to kind of talk about what, um, my colleague, um, Ms. Spears just talked about as far as, far as community engagement. It is so important as we go through this consolidation that we, especially in our minority communities that are going to be transitioning, that we know that we have so many children that are underserved and we know that. We know that that is predominant African-American communities that we're dealing with. And I grew up in North Nashville, so I understand and I get it. And as you guys have heard me say before, I have packed my children all five to a 10 Jones Padilla magnet. And six years ago, 10 years ago, Jones Padilla magnet looked totally different. Um, it was, uh, not under capacity, it was almost over capacity. Everybody was knocking down their doors to get to Jones Padilla because of the resources, because of the parent engagement. We have to start helping our parents understand that they have a voice. We have to make sure that they understand that they do have power. And that's one of the things that I had to do when I started this position as a school board member. I think this should be lesson learned for all school board members that are on this call and all my colleagues understand they can't do it alone. That's why we're elected to this office. Everybody knows. My, and JFK, when I came into this, we all know the lawsuits that carried behind JFK. We know the bad history that came along with JFK, but it was my job and my responsibility to get out there and get, and, 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 uh, help these parents, uh, get back on their feet and believe in JFK. They had zero, um, they, they didn't have any type of, um, support because they gave up. So for five weeks straight, me, Dr. Springer and the principal over JFK, we did something that was very strategic. We wanted to bring back, uh, parenting engagement, wanted to make sure our teachers were supported. So it is important that we do things as board members to help bridge that gap. And as a result, right before COVID-19, we had over 300 families to show up at, at a community meeting, and I'm sorry, at a community meeting. So we got to do more as, as school board members. We can talk the talk, but we have to walk the walk also. And sometimes we have to get in there because they trust us, they believe in us and they are, um, looking for, they looking, they looking to us for our leadership. And so we have to do more, and even if you're disadvantaged, most of those students over at JFK were disadvantaged children. They had families that came from backgrounds that you and I, you know, um, pray about every night. But in the midst of it all, they still came out. They came out and they showed out because they wanted more for their children and they believed in our leadership. But that's what we have to do more of. These, these kids are going to be okay. They're going to be fine. And I definitely believe that Dr. Battle and her team is going to make sure they're going to pump all the resources into these schools so that we can make sure that these kids are successful academically, emotionally and mentally. I do believe that and I thank her team for doing that. But I do believe that we have to still do more and we have to do our part to make sure that we're more engaged so that we can't, we can't stop these type of consolidations. That's what we do. So I do believe a year from now, when we, when we revisit this, that parents are going to say this was a good idea and that my kids are going to be fine. So most importantly, first and foremost, it's about our kids and our teachers and making sure that we're doing our part. But we have to get our parents engaged. You guys have heard me say that over and over again on the board. Parent engagement is everything and we have to make sure that they get that support. So saying all that, I do support, um, the consolidation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. Anybody else have any comments?
Can we call the question?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion, please.
Okay, please do.
Uh, I move to adopt the closures and consolidations as recommended by Dr. Battle and her team for the 2021 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Spearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who did that?
Jeannie.
Okay. Thank you, Jeannie. I appreciate it. Any other discussion? And I want everyone to know how much I really do appreciate everybody's remarks. Everybody had something very significant to say. I hope that Dr. Battle and her team had their pencils at ready because we really, um, need to make sure that we reach out to and engage the families, the students and the parents in this consolidation measure. We, as Ms. Bush said very succinctly, we need to make sure they get the resources that they need. But Dr. Gentry addressed that as well. When you have, uh, you know, when you have expenses that are the same for one high school versus another high school with half the, uh, students in, in the school, that's almost like a tax. And that's something that is, is not, uh, going to be beneficial for the students in that, in that, um, school. That's something that's going to be a detriment for the students in that school. So we need to look into that and we need to fix that to make sure that our students do get the resources. And every school is different, every student is different as to what resources that they need. So we really need to be mindful of those situations and make sure our students get what they need, each and every one of them. So I do appreciate everybody's remarks around that. So we have a motion that's been properly made and seconded to approve the consolidations and the closures in, uh, number A1. Can I get a roll call vote, Dr. Spearing?
Dr. Gentry? Dr. Gentry?
I said aye.
Dr. Gentry votes aye, Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye, Ms. Spearing?
Aye.
Ms. Spearing votes aye, Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Bush votes aye, Ms. Bush? Ms. Bush, you're muted. Is that an aye? We'll come back. Ms. Player Peters?
Aye.
Ms. Player Peters votes aye, Ms. Pupel Walker?
Aye.
Pupel Walker votes aye, Ms. Frog?
Aye.
Ms. Frog votes aye. Ms. Bush, are you back?
Sorry.
Ms. Bush votes aye. Ms. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Shepherd votes aye. Madam Chair, you have nine ayes.
Thank you very much. And thank you, everybody, for, uh, your comments around, uh, this topic. I know it's a tough topic and it's hard to vote on something like this where you affect so many lives, but I do appreciate your participation and your vote. We will move on to, uh, the governance issues, A2, uh, recommended approval of nutrition services budget, uh, fund budget. And before we get into discussion, can I go ahead and get a motion and a second on
This is Free to Player Peters. I motion to approve the nutrition's funds, uh, budget for the fiscal year 21.
Can I get a second? Who said that, Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is this Mr. Hanson who's presenting this?
Yes, I am. Ms. Shepherd, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, as you are aware, the board typically votes on, uh, three separate budgets. Um, the first one that we have here, the nutrition services fund is a separate fund. Uh, it is what's called a self-supporting enterprise fund or intended to be. Uh, the majority of the revenue for this, uh, fund comes from USDA meal reimbursement based upon student participation and the breakfast and lunch program, as well as paid meals, uh, for the schools that do not participate in the community eligibility, eligibility program, um, or, and/or à la carte sales to students and adults. Uh, you can see that the, uh, projected revenue is just under $46 million, uh, matching up with the projected expenses. I did want to point out, uh, that you can see the estimated cash reserves at the end of the current fiscal year, which would carry forward to the beginning of the next fiscal year, is in a, uh, projected deficit situation of approximately $5.3 million. Um, we are not alone in this scenario as far as other school districts in our state, as well as other peer districts that we have across the country that are represented by the council of the great city schools. As you know, we continued to pay all staff, even though school buildings were closed. And since this is a separate, uh, self-supporting enterprise fund, uh, as schools were closed, this program did not receive nearly the revenue that it typically would while schools are open and in session. But yet we did continue to pay, uh, pay all staff throughout the school closures. And we are, uh, I, I do want to take this opportunity to publicly express, uh, our appreciation to all of the food service workers, as well as the bus drivers who have been participating in providing meals and food, uh, to families and students, uh, really since the March 3rd tornado. Um, so we are, uh, aware of the, uh, situation as it relates to the, uh, deficit at the end of this fiscal year. We are hopeful that there will be additional sources of funding, uh, that will be available to this nutrition services fund from some of these sources as they relate to CARES funding either at the state level or possibly at the city level, uh, for, uh, to alleviate this because again, this is not something where we're alone. Uh, this is affecting basically every school district across the country that operates a food service program. Again, the, uh, total revenue estimate is approximately $46 million, 45,981 to be exact. And then the, uh, estimated expenditures match, uh, the projected revenue. Of course, the, um, largest source of expenses, uh, are related to labor costs and then the second largest source, uh, would be related to food purchases. And so again, this is a, a self-supporting enterprise fund, uh, that, uh, we are bringing for approval at this time, um, based upon our best estimates of, uh, projected revenue and expenditures.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hanson?
I do. This is Rachel Lan.
Go ahead, Rachel Lan.
So my question is, is, uh, I, I really, well, first I should say, I really appreciate, uh, you spending some time to thank our bus drivers and nutrition staff that have done, uh, really incredible work of trying to keep our families and students fed during these unprecedented times. Um, it's my understanding, so my question is, is that we're going to be able to continue to provide, uh, lunches through June potentially, um, for school-aged children? Is that true? Um, though maybe not reflected here, but is that true since it's somewhat related in our nutrition budgets?
Sure. And, and I will defer to Spencer Taylor, who is the executive director of nutrition services, and I believe, uh, Spencer is available to provide some more explanation. And as Spencer may be trying to unmute, Ken Stark also could speak to that.
Sure. Um, uh, Ms. Elrod, the, our current plan is to continue to provide meals as we have been providing, uh, through the, the waivers that we've been operating are, um, still in place through June 30th. So we, our intent is to be able to continue the, the, the service in the same manner that we have been with the, the two meals, um, a day at the same time, using primarily the drive-through, um, uh, grab and go method. Um, the, the waivers, uh, are, through the state are set to expire June 30th, but we have seen some movement on the, the federal side to extend those waivers longer. So in, in the event that, uh, the state agrees and extends those waivers, where our hope is we can continue to provide those meals, um, through the month of July as well. In, in terms of the budget, those meals, we get reimbursed per meal that we, uh, serve to a student. So the, all of the costs that are incurred would be, uh, would be covered through that reimbursement through those programs. So, um, it, it actually is a, a little bit helpful to our budget to be able to continue those programs. So we're, um, in addition to the, the benefit that families feel, uh, being able to receive the meals, the, the financial, uh, piece is, is helpful to us. So I hope that answered all your questions.
It did. It even, it answered even my follow-ups. Thank you, Ken. You're, you're so thorough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hanson, you, uh, made, uh, comments that you hope that some of this cash shortfall would be, um, you could catch up by using some of the CARES funding either from the state or city level. Do we have any direct knowledge that that is going to happen?
Ms. Shepherd, we don't have any direct knowledge. I know that, uh, I participate on the council of the great city schools, chief financial officers weekly call, and I know that's something that has been discussed among the large school districts, uh, across the country and, uh, also have contacts in other school districts across the sea. Uh, they're feeling the same. Uh, it's something that's been discussed, um, but there has not It's something that's been discussed, but there has not been a definite decision made about it. But something will have to be done to provide an additional source of funding to this separate fund, to bring it back to a positive situation. But right now, the discussion has been the potential for CARES funding, either at the state level or at the city level. Until those discussions come to some sort of decision, that's just the hope at this point.
So if I'm following the money correctly, our, for every PS portion of CARES funding will go to the city? And it's up to the city powers that be to decide when we get and what we get?
Well, there is CARES funding that, of course, goes to the state, for the state, for the governor, to determine how that CARES funding would be utilized. Then there's also CARES funding, I believe it's around $120 million or so, going to the city. And the mayor and the city would determine how that CARES funding would be utilized. Of course, they're recognizing there are lots of needs as it relates to how those funds would or could be spent. But that has been, that has been the point of many of the discussions that have occurred regarding the Nutrition Services Fund, is they're all going to need an infusion of additional funding based upon the fact that schools have been closed and therefore cafeterias have not been operating as they normally would. And most everybody that I've talked to, if not everyone, has continued to pay staff.
So according to what Mr. Stark said, the meals that we distributed to the families, the breakfast and lunch that we put on our yellow bus and distributed to the families, we were reimbursed for those?
We are. It's a much smaller operation than what we would normally see, of course, when every school is open and every cafeteria is operating. But the meals that we are providing during this time, there is reimbursement for those meals. It's just on a very small scale, as opposed to what we would normally see.
And so you don't have a direct voice, you don't have the mayor's ear, in other words, when it comes to directing funds toward our way?
Correct. That has not been discussed directly.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I just want to thank certainly Chris Henson for this presentation, but also anytime I have questions, pick up the phone and call Chris. And Chris, thank you for answering my questions like you do. I also want to thank Dr. Battle, because as soon as we had school closings because of the tornado and COVID-19, Dr. Battle was right on it and her staff to provide food services for our students. And I want to thank Dr. Battle for that.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion that's been properly made and seconded to accept A2, which is the Recommended Approval of the Nutrition Services Fund Budget. Can I get a roll call vote, Dr. Sevier?
Dr. Gentry?
Aye.
Dr. Gentry votes aye. Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye. Ms. Spearing?
Aye.
Ms. Spearing votes aye. Ms. Bugs?
Aye.
Ms. Bugs votes aye. Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Bush votes aye. Ms. Player Peters?
Aye.
Ms. Player Peters votes aye. Ms. Pooja Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Pooja Walker votes aye. Ms. Frog?
Aye.
Ms. Frog votes aye. Ms. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Shepherd votes aye. Madam Chair, you have nine ayes.
Thank you very much. All right. We will move on to item A3, which is the Recommended Approval of Federal Programs and Grants Fund Budget. Could I get a motion to approve A3, please?
This is Sharon Gentry. So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion to accept A3, which is the Federal Programs. Would you do have any discussion?
I do.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Perry.
I guess this is a question for Mr. Clay. Can you talk about the increase for the Language Learner, Title III, the English Language Acquisition Enhancement, Enhancement, Academic Achievement line item? And what that increase is going towards? And what can that be used towards? And I know we're, you know, we have the textbook issues for the English Arts. Some of that funding be used for that in some shape, form, or fashion?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Player Peters. This is Hank Clay. And Federal Programs says report to me, that particular item actually goes through our English Language Learners Department under the direction of Dr. Williams currently. So Dr. Williams, can you please address that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Player Peters. The title is specifically for our immigrant families. And the parameters on that particular line item are fairly loose. But I know that what we've experienced year over year is an increase in our EL population. And so that's why there's that increase there, to accommodate the number of EL students that we are serving has continued to increase over the last year.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, well, we have.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I just had a quick question. So I see we have $5 million still from the MSAP grant from a couple of years ago. And when I was talking to some of the MSAP coordinators, they were saying that we're looking at a second round that would touch a few middle schools and a few elementary schools. Are you all prepared for any kind of mini-update, or how is that going? Do you need support from us? I know funding for the evaluation was part of the issue.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bugs. And Dr. Griffin actually has MSAP files under her. So, Dr. Griffin?
Yes, thank you for that question, Board Member Bugs. Myself and Dr. Eder are working closely on that proposal. And we will provide a one-page update on Thursday. We should have that completed. And we are looking at four additional schools actually receiving a little over $1 million as that proposal is updated.
Thank you so much, Dr. Griffin. I really just wanted to highlight you all's work, because it's been so transformative in the schools that we received the funding for. So thank you for you, Dr. Eder, all of the MSAP site coordinators. Just thank you for all of it. Look forward to the update.
Dr. Griffin, will we have that one page before we meet with the council? Dr. Griffin?
Can you repeat that?
I said, will we have that one-page document before we meet with the council at 4:30?
Let me double-check that, and I will follow up before this meeting ends. We may have it.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other questions or comments on the federal budget? All right, saying none, we have a motion that's been properly made and seconded to accept number A3, the Federal Programs and Grants Fund Budget. Can we get a roll call vote, Dr. Sevier? Dr. Sevier? Dr. Sevier, can you hear me?
He may be muted and cannot unmute. I'll do it for you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So, Dr. Gentry?
Aye.
Ms. Bugs?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Pooja Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Player Peters?
Aye.
Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Spearing?
Aye.
Ms. Frog?
Aye.
And Chair Shepherd?
Aye.
Okay. That's nine oh. Thank you.
Okay. We will move along to the last item on the agenda, which is A4, Recommended Approval of Fiscal Year 2019, 2020 Operating Budget. We saved the best for last. So if I could get a motion on this particular item?
Ms. Shepherd, there are actually two options on the agenda. And so you may want to make sure that someone determines which option they're making the motion.
I'm not aware of two options.
Maybe we'll let Chris present, and then you guys can make a motion and decide which one you want to go with.
Okay. That works for me.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. So the first option is, basically, it's the same document that was included in the board agenda packet. It's one that we've been discussing now for some time. It shows at the top employee compensation, where we have required additional expenditures relating to employee insurance increases, where we pay 75% of the premium, approximately $3.8 million increase for certificated employees, and $1.7 million increase for our support employees. It also includes approximately $15.1 million for the continuation of the current year, mid-year 3% COLA that was provided back in January. It was funded for half a year this current fiscal year by our own undesignated fund balance. And so to be able to continue that mid-year 3% COLA that's been given requires additional funding of approximately $15.1 million. And if you could go down to the bottom part of the page, please. Thank you. I won't go through each of these, because we've been discussing them as far as the required additions. I will mention the continuation of the pre-K program without the federal pre-K expansion grant funding that ended this past December. This would continue those 22 pre-K classrooms for next year, as well as enrollment increases for our English learners, based upon our current projections, increase in the Metro IT internal service fee, the decrease in career ladder, as well as custodial and ground services, the increase for the Metro water rate increase, the decrease for the MDHA property tax refund, and then the enrollment increase for our student-based budgeting, student-based budget schools. And then what the board has already approved as far as the consolidation of Braemar into Jerry Baxter, showing that savings. And then at the bottom, the enrollment increase and slight pupil increase for our charter schools, particularly those that continue to add an additional grade next year of approximately $6.5 million. Then if you could go to the bottom part of the page to show proposed changes, which would be basically the reductions that we've identified so far that we discussed at our last meeting, moving some operating costs for one year over to capital funding. And then also the school consolidations that the board just approved, saving approximately $3.5 million. We are curtailing, severely curtailing, any exception hires with this proposal for school budgets, reducing approximately $3 million, and then reducing approximately $1 million from central office costs. This particular budget totals $929.4 million. You can see at the bottom, which would require additional funding of almost $15 million. That $15 million increase would represent a 1.6% increase to our current year budget. And so that would be option one. And then if you could go down to the next page and just go to the bottom sheet, it's the same exact information, except at the very bottom, we have added one line that if we were to have a budget that matched the mayor's recommended funding allocation of $914.9 million, we would have to determine additional budget reductions from district services, as well as individual school budgets of approximately $14.5 million to make this match up with the funding allocation that's been recommended in the mayor's budget ordinance. So those are the two options that we have relating to the operating budget.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. I see it now. Okay. We are, well, we are discussing the operating budget right now. We do not have a motion on the floor in anticipation of the discussion. Do I have anybody with questions or discussion on these two options here?
Madam Chair, this is your spirit.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. These are hard times, and this is the hardest budget in my eight years on the board. The mayor has given us his budget of $914.9 million. And I am aware that because of the maintenance of effort required by state law, that the mayor and the council have already cut tens of millions of dollars from other agencies to ensure that we get the maintenance of effort funding. So with the global pandemic, with the problems that our city has gone through, with the tornado, and we really, it's uncertain what is going to happen in the future. We don't know if we'll even be back in school in August. We are going to have to play that by ear. So I personally do not feel good about going to the council and saying, "Give us another 15 million." I think we have to face reality and cut another 15 million from our school budget, from our operating budget. I will say that I am greatly opposed to cutting from our school budgets and impacting schools by losing teaching positions. But I would like to make a motion, if I may. I would like to approve, I move to approve the option two for $914.9 million for the operating budget for fiscal year 2021.
Second.
Who made the second?
Amy.
Okay, thank you very much.
So can, you know, for everybody that's on the call and listening, can we get either from Mr. Henson or Dr. Battle or someone sort of a high-level overview of where does the 15 million come from? So are we still looking to hold schools harmless, as Mr. Henson always says? And if that's the case, where are we getting the additional 15 million from, realistically?
I will jump in, and of course, Dr. Battle, please weigh in as well. I'll take you back to the slide that we discussed at the previous Budget and Finance Committee meeting, where it breaks down our funding and how much we actually have available after the charter school payments, what's left. We have approximately $770 million. Of that 770, 520 million is school budgets, and around 250 million would be district-provided services. And within the district-wide provided services, the largest portion of that is the utility costs that the district pays on behalf of all the schools. The second largest would be transportation, third largest, maintenance, fourth would be custodial and grounds. So then you start getting into some smaller numbers. And so I think what we had discussed at the last Budget and Finance Committee meeting was that it would need to be a combination of both district-provided services, as well as individual school budgets. Just because we have been going back over the last three years, we have reduced our budget, and we have held schools harmless. We've not reduced any school budget, or it's not affected any of our schools' individual budgets. And we've reduced contracted services and travel, and we've reduced transportation and IT and a number of other areas. And so that's where the conversation was left at the last Budget and Finance Committee meeting. And I'll defer to Dr. Battle if she has any other comments she would like to make relating to the $14.5 million.
Yes, I'll make two brief comments. One, just kind of... One, just kind of calling out that this current proposal in both of them, in both scenarios, we have captured already about $1 million in savings for the central office reorganization. And as we started this work, one of the things we wanted to do was to prioritize school budgets. But with the significant cuts, we know that it is very likely that you could find even half, if not the majority of that, from central office. So that's something that we would have to be very mindful about, given the years of history of cutting from central and right off the top of this year's budget building, we've already identified additional cuts for central office. Chris, could you speak just very briefly to what that, if we were to, in a few scenarios, if we were to address school budgets, what kind of percentage we will be looking at per school?
Sure. As we, as we discussed at the last committee meeting, as we've looked at what's remaining from that 770 million that's available to us. If we were to look at approximately a 2% reduction to each of those areas, that would equate to about a $15 million reduction. And when I say each of those areas, I mean a 2% reduction to the district provided services and a 2% reduction to the individual school budgets on average. That would be approximately a $15 million reduction.
Dr. Jeter, did that answer your questions?
Yes.
Can I, can I jump in? This is Jeannie.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I think that Mr. Henson has said this multiple times over this budget season and in previous years, that every year we have not gotten what we had asked for, right? And so the cuts that we have had to make in terms of determining what we're not going to buy or we're not going to purchase or not going to invest in have always come from central services. And so I want to make sure the audience understands that when we talk about central services, we're not just talking about central office personnel. We're talking about all the different services that Mr. Henson outlined there. But I think, you know, one of the things we have done more than any other district in the state is drive our funding down to the schools and given discretion to principals to invest dollars as they see fit based on their school's needs. And I think at this point that the shared sacrifice, if we were to approve a budget looking for that 15 million to come from us, I just think there's no way to get around asking schools to carry some of that burden. I don't think that's what anybody wants. I think that Mr. Henson, Dr. Battle have done everything they can to avoid it. But I just, in terms of the expenses that we have that we can't avoid, I think that's where we are. But I also want to say that council has not made a final determination on their budget. And I think it's still in our interest to throw the ball back there and see if there's a place where they can find that 15 million for us. And I think it's on us to advocate for that and to talk to our council members, talk to constituents, talk to teachers and ask the council to find that 15 million in some way before we abandon ship on that. And I will say that, you know, our partners, the mayor has cut budgets for nonprofits. These are partners that have helped us. We are going to have less ability from partners to support schools and students. I just think we can't give up yet on trying to find that 15 million elsewhere. I'll leave it there.
Thank you.
May I respond?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have talked to several of the council members that have shared with me that there is no appetite in Metro Council to go over the $1 property tax increase that the mayor has proposed. So if there is no appetite in the council, I think that it's wise for us to live within our means. And about school budgets, the school budgets were cut this year because of COVID. And two years ago, I think it was in January, they were frozen and the schools had to give their money back, any additional money that they had or extra money that they had that hadn't been spent back to central office when we had that $7.5 million shortfall under Dr. Sean Joseph. So the school budgets have taken a major cut as well. And I know that it's, you know, we may have to do both, but I just, I hate to see us get to a point where we are losing positions at the schools. And in terms of central office, anyone who is not directly impacting students, I think their jobs should be questioned and that we, our resources, our money, our time should go toward ensuring that our students are cared for. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, absolutely. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, this is Rachel Ann.
Go ahead, please, Rachel Ann.
Thank you. I want to make sure that we, to kind of piggyback off some of what Ms. Poopa Walker said, we do not have an abundance, whether it's in our schools or in our central office. And please be, remind yourself that only, I think it's 11% of our budget goes to central office. And central office, to Jeannie's point, is not just people. They are true services that are provided to our students. And as was said on our last budget meeting, for years, we've been cutting away any potential fat we could find. And now, then we cut to muscle and now we are down to the bone. And so we're cutting into that and that means we're cutting into our schools. So I know that we keep saying we don't want to have any type of cuts within our schools and we don't want to have any potential loss of positions. And I would agree that probably everyone, I mean, crazy things have happened, but I would agree that I think all of us would not want that to be the case. But, Mr. Henson, could you possibly give us an outlook of what that will be for, what kind of choices will a school have to make within their school-based budget when we provide these types or when we have these types of cuts to their school-based budget? What kind of decisions are they going to be faced with? What is the potential outcome of these cuts for them?
Well, sure. And I hate to speculate too much because our school budgets are different, as every school is different. And since we do have a weighted student funding model, we do provide additional funding and resources to schools that have, for instance, a high number of students from poverty or low achieving students. We have a 24% weight for our English learner students. We have weights for our exceptional education students. And so budgets are very different from school to school. We do have some, particularly small schools, that have basically, the only thing that they have would be funding to be able to operate as a school. They really don't have many extras. Some of that is because the district has put some non-negotiables together that where we are requiring some certain types of things from schools for them to budget for. But some are just small schools that don't have a lot of students, that have a lot of those additional weights. And so those would be really challenging. Some of the larger schools have more, have more options, so to speak, as it relates to how those reductions might be accomplished. But more than likely, it's be, as Ms. Sparing said, more than likely, it's going to be positions, school positions that will have to be reduced because that's what the vast majority of school budgets cover. Just like for the entire district, our overall operating budget excluding the charter payment is about 80% salaries and benefits or people. And it's even probably a higher percent at the schools. I can't be able to speculate in detail, but we're probably, we probably are looking at schools needing to look at how many positions they have to have to be able to operate.
Thank you. That's a good answer, I should have said. I understand that it'll be speculative because of the varying degrees of enrollment and the weights that come with the enrollments of each individual population of a school. So I appreciate you putting that asterisk with that. I want to say as well, as a point, I have inquired about the charter school amount that we're providing, as I said earlier, so I want to refer back to it. It makes me uncomfortable and it just doesn't sit well that we're providing that 6.5 or 6.6 million dollars in charter growth when we are having to also close schools and potentially lose individual school positions in a decreased budget year. So I had asked questions from Melissa, and I know that she's on the call, Ms. Robert, about state statute TCA. I want to make sure that I have it right, so you can speak eloquently to it, since you are the expert. TCA 4913108C. And so will you please explain why we can't do that or why that doesn't apply in this situation? Maybe. Maybe Melissa couldn't be here.
She was on the call.
She was. She has a new German shepherd. I know that's very stressful.
Ms. Elrod, I'll jump in. Obviously, I'm not Melissa or an attorney, but, and I didn't sleep in a Holiday Inn Express last night, but I can speak to it, not necessarily from the legal term, but just when the charter law was passed back, it's been a while now ago. The requirement is that a district transfer the total state and local revenue per pupil amount for the district to each charter school based upon that charter school's enrollment. And so basically what that means is that the charter school is getting a per pupil amount of our entire operating budget, which would include everything, not just the student-based budgeting, but all of the other district provided services as well. And so we always go back to the way that that law was passed and what it said. And so when we have, for instance, this year, the increase is basically based upon the increase in projected enrollment in charter schools, particularly those that through their growth plan will be adding an additional grade next year. And so state law would require us to transfer that state and local revenue per pupil amount to the charter schools based upon their enrollment. And as their enrollment continues to increase, then the per pupil amount, which again is our entire operating budget per pupil, would be transferred to them, to that effect. And so hopefully that somewhat answers your question without Ms. Robert.
It does. And she texted me and it sounds like she was accidentally put on mute and is now available. But you did frankly, a good job of some of the emails that we had shared. Are you able to hear us, Ms. Robert? I'm trying to find you in the attendees. Maybe not. In case she's not able to unmute herself, I just wanted to say, I know I've gotten this question a lot from different council members and some constituents and just advocates, but mostly constituents and council members about how are we giving this money here, but we're having to cut money elsewhere. And so I want to make sure that people are aware that we recognize this. And yeah, Melissa, it says Melissa is on mute on MMPS's end. So I don't know if we can fix that, Melissa. I know you can hear us and I appreciate you continuing to try. But I want people to be aware that we, we too recognize how that looks in this situation. And that some questions have been asked and we're trying to do our best with that. But that, I guess to add to Mr. Henson's comments, you know, this is not for, according to Melissa, the TCA statute that I was referring to is for new charter schools and not necessarily for new growth because of those seats were already approved by high school boards. And so I want to make sure that we're clear that we've tried to handle some of those concerns and questions, though it is frustrating and disappointing for all kinds of people. And I appreciate, once again, Mr. Henson, you trying to give us some answers on what it would look like in individual schools. And I don't think any of us want to have those types of cuts in our schools. It is a difficult decision to make. I would like for us to try to have some conversations on what it would look like if we ask for the additional 4.5 and we don't get it. Would we then just return back to this budget as asked for by Ms. Sparing without the 14.5? What would we do if they say, no, we don't have it? We've already cut enough to provide you what we can?
Ms. Elrod, I can start and then please others jump in. But it would be somewhat of a similar situation to last year. As you remember, board voted on a budget that significantly exceeded the mayor's recommended funding level. And that's, that was the budget that we went to our budget hearing with the Metro Council with last year. And then ultimately, the council didn't fully fund that budget. So we had to come back and make appropriate adjustments and reductions and bring a revised budget back to the board for approval. And I think that occurred on July 1st.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Henson, could I clarify the charter school money here for just a minute? So anyone that knows me knows I take copious notes. So at our budget meeting that we had on April 30th, where you enumerated our budget reductions, one of them, 8.7 million was transfer payments, a reduction in transfer payments to charter schools because as our funding was reduced, so is their funding, charter school funding reduced. But that 8.7 is not the same as the 6.6 because the 6.6 is just related to new growth. Am I getting that right?
Yes, ma'am, you are. That amount that you gave from the budget reductions that we have had would scan several fiscal years. That wasn't just for one year and that was based upon, what we typically do during the year is reconcile state and local revenue to actual enrollment. And so what we're dealing with at the beginning of a year are projections. And so that's exactly right, is what you said. The 6.5 million, 6 million that we have in addition for next year is based upon the projected enrollment increase with a slight per pupil increase for charters. And then we will reconcile that amount during the year as enrollment changes and also after the close of the fiscal year, once we know what actual state and local revenues are.
So we do know that, and in fact, one charter school is closing. I don't remember which one. So have we taken that into consideration as well?
That's a good question. And what we have done with that, that since that closure, that was, I believe, a Republican, a Republic, Republic operator.
Yeah, you're right.
They have other, at least one other middle school, and I don't know how many they have. I know their intent was to attempt to merge the closing Nashville Academy of Computer Science Charter into one of their other charter middle schools. And so we don't know exactly where those students will go at this point. And so if they go to another charter school, then it would not have any effect, any net effect for budget. And so until we know where those students go and those families decide to go, then we've left that number the same.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Did somebody else have a question or comment?
It's Amy. I was gonna make a couple.
Go for it.
First of all, Mr. Henson, what is the base amount that we are providing the charters for next year? Not the increase, but is it 150, 160 million?
I believe it's, I believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 144, 145 million in total is what we're estimating.
Okay. And then that is not including the 6.6 million increase for next year.
No, that does include the increase.
It does include, okay.
Yeah, the current, the current year number is, according to the budget amendment that the board approved back in December, is approximately 138 million.
Okay.
And so that 6.5 million would be added on to it.
Okay, thank you. Well, so I just want to reiterate my earlier point that we wouldn't have to be focusing on these school closures if we didn't have to. on these school closures if we didn't have so many charter schools. I mean, that's just the reality of where we are. And just taking, just setting aside the enrollment issues, we have opened a charter sector that serves a very small percentage of our students, but is absorbing a large portion of our budget. And we've had ongoing debates for years about, Mr. Henson mentioned this, that we, that the charter schools are getting the per pupil funding. They've also received a lot of free services from the district on top of the full per pupil funding that they're getting. And now there's been a lot of national news about the fact that charter schools are applying for federal aid through these small business loans. So they would, if they receive these loans, and I don't know how many of our schools may have applied for them, or how much money may be flowing to them through these business loans, they would be getting their full per pupil funding, some free services from us, federal aid, which I believe these small business loans are fully forgivable in some circumstances. So they get, they're getting lots of money. And I know it's state law that we have to pay them. But I just, again, want to reiterate, I just hope that we, as a board, will be thoughtful about our votes in the future because we have, the board has created this scenario where we are funding two separate competing school systems and we don't have enough money. And one of those school systems, the charter sector, has all of the advantages. They get every advantage of their state law, they get all the extra funding. On top of all the funding I mentioned a minute ago, they also get investor funding. So they've got lots of extra money flowing to them that our district schools do not get. And we know that our district schools are serving the most costly and challenging to educate students because we take every kid that walks in the door any time of the year. We take the severe special needs, we take English learners, we take, you know, predominantly low income students. So it's really an unfair balance that we have created with the charter sector. I don't know what to do about it because I know that if we were to try to just violate state law and take away some of this funding from them, there, I guess there was a possibility that the state could just withhold more funding from us. Who knows? We've been through this before with Kevin Upman, who took 3.4 million dollars from us. And I don't want to, I don't want to just be afraid because I thought at the time when we had the state stepped in and took our funding that we needed, I was fully willing to sue over that. But I think this is a little different scenario. It's just, it's just an unfair situation that we're in. So, and then that said, I, as far as the budget overall, I understand arguments on both sides of just pitching this back to Metro Council because we typically do ask for more than we receive. We always ask for more than we receive and then we have to make cuts later. But I feel this is such an unusual time, and we keep saying that, but I think that the city has really worked hard to try to rein in our debt problems. And I think we have a mayor who is fully supportive of funding us. I believe that he would do that. I believe he is supportive of funding the teachers, salary increases and the needs that we have. Of course, he hasn't been able to prove that because we just don't have any money right now. And so that's why I wonder if, you know, and if we should just, I wonder if we should just accept the budget that has been provided to us, the maintenance of effort budget, because I just don't think there are a lot of other cuts to be made. So anyway, those are my thoughts and just, just want to share. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Jeanne. I just want to, I want to reiterate that I think we have to make the case to council. I think we'd be giving them a pass. You know, the biggest burden in some ways in the COVID response has fallen to the schools. We are the ones that are providing food to families. We're the ones that are having to convert all this instruction to online. And we've had to carry, I think, a more significant load than other agencies across the district and, or across the city, I should say. And I don't think, I don't think the case is closed. I don't, I'm hearing from council members that they want to find a way. And so I would love to hear what other board members have to say about that. I just think the maintenance of effort is just, you know, I just don't think we should give up just yet and settle for the maintenance of effort amount, so.
Ms. Shepherd, may I?
Absolutely.
And so I would, and I hope I don't misquote you here, Ms. Shepherd, but I think we both said the same thing, that we should ask for what it is we need. And we've cut deep already. I think that, I think that the quickness with which we responded to the previous midyear reduction that Mr. Henson has already referenced, it's kind of sort of said, you know, yeah, they'll find a way. And I think that, even if we don't vote for this, right? We ask for what we want, but at least we now have a budget and have done the work that if the answer is still no, I, you know, it's not gonna, we just pivot, right? We pivot and we do what we have to do. But I don't think it's, it's fair. It's fair to the teachers, to students, the central office staff that's already made adjustments and reconfigured how they're doing their work to support the needs of our, of our schools for us to just, to give up, right? So I think we ask for what it is we want. We've got this alternate budget here in front of us. We know what it looks like. We know what the pain looks like. We know where the, they've already shared with us some preliminary thoughts on where the cuts will have to take place. So the work has been done, but I don't think we, just because it's been done, that we not, we go forward without asking for what we need. Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you, Dr. Gentry. Anybody else?
Yes, this is Frida Player Peters. And to, to piggyback on Dr. Gentry's comments, I think we cannot go to the council without advocating for one fundamental thing. And I'm going to go on my soapbox again. We have not funded textbooks for English language arts for the next upcoming school year. I can support the second, the second option, but we have to go to council and say, we need money for textbooks. If you don't need money for anything else, we need money for textbooks. We are tested on the state level. We do math testing on the quality of our students' reading. If you cannot read, you cannot learn. Like, it's a fundamental part of education. And the fact that we are going, we have to go to council and say, you know, we have made cuts to help supplement the COLA for teachers. Parents understand now more than ever the effort that teachers take on a daily basis to educate students that, you know, for parents to do it for one, two, four, or five kids, now imagine what a student, I mean, a teacher has to do for 30 kids on a regular basis that I think is the time we can ask for an extraordinary amount of, we have to fund textbooks. It's a fundamental part of what we do. I mean, other, if it was another subject, I could kind of take that difficult swallow of, okay, let's postpone. But this is English language. Like, this is the fundamental of education. And the fact that we need to go to council and say, at the very least, we're doing a, we're doing a revenue increase, some of those pennies have to go to provide the fundamental effort of educating our students in the very basic factor. We just made the difficult decision and we took the courageous decision to consolidate schools because they're not, one of the reasons, because they're not getting the resources they need to perform to the levels that we are. And they were about to go to council and say, we're making these cuts. And the fundamental reasons that we're trying to combine resources to, for it happens to get more resources and the fundamental resources those students need are books to learn. Like, that is a very fundamental thing. And so this is something I just, I cannot get conscious, go to council, not ask for textbooks. I mean, it's the one fundamental things that we have to do, that we have to provide to our students to make sure they learn, to meet, just to do the basic testing so we can be scheduled and we can be, that's good, we can be tested on that. That's one of the fundamental things. If parents are walking with their feet, you know, as we were saying about going to choice schools, we have to provide the fundamental resource to do that. And the very least, if we don't ask for anything else for council, we have to ask for the funding of textbooks. I mean, as Dr. Williams has laid out the case time again, but, you know, textbooks is an investment. It's not like it's a one-time thing. There are consumables a part of that 12 million dollars, but the majority of that 12 million dollars were textbooks to last for several years. So it's not like it's a one-time investment and we can kind of, you know, do things by duct tape and spit and wrap around, you know, and go to next year. These are textbooks. And so I'm asking and imploring our colleagues, when we go to the council on Thursday, we have to say to council that, you know, we have made cuts in central office. We're making, you know, some type of decisions that cuts are going to make down to the school level. But we cannot ask our schools to make cuts on their school level and then turn around and say, oh, sorry, we don't have a textbook for you to teach a fundamental subject that we're tested on year after year after year. And then our test scores are based upon, per schools are based upon, we're achievement schools. Everything is based upon that effects, that has multiple ripple effects. So I am not going to give up on council, let them get a pass, and they at least have to answer that question. Because they don't answer anything else. I mean, we, as Dr. Gentry say, we will make it work somehow, but we have to say, we need money for textbooks. If anything else, that's what we need. And so I, I mean, I ask, I think, you know, I propose that we somehow ask for at least that part for what happens. We don't know what's going to happen for the rest of this year. We're, you know, we're seeing how the economy is doing. We hear different things from the Fed and from the Congress and from the state about what the economic forecast looks like. So, you know, knowing what we may not, what we're going to have to encounter for next fiscal year, we have to fund textbooks. I mean, at the very least, you know, we have a status quo budget next year. That means we don't fund textbooks for another year, so we're going two years. We've done it the capital spending plan. You know, we have, you know, deferred maintenance on schools time and time again. So we sacrifice buildings, and I'm willing to sacrifice buildings, but I'm not willing to sacrifice textbooks. You know, we can patch workability and we can just pray that, you know, it stays up. But textbooks are a fundamental thing of what we do. Going back to our mission, if we're going to prepare kids to be productive citizens of our, of our county, of our state, of our country, they have to be able to read. And it's a fundamental thing to do. And part of our budget, we have to go to council and say, we are making the tough decisions, the adults are making the tough decisions, but we cannot let our children be the sacrificial lambs because we can't provide them basic textbooks. And so I'm just asking for that. Obviously, I'm very passionate about it, but this is where, like, for me, this is a line in the sand. Like, textbooks are a fundamental thing. We are educators. We provide education and the fun of that education is you have to read. You can't learn science if you don't read, you can't learn math if you don't read. You can learn everything else, you can catch up on everything else. But, you know, we've talked about literacy as a board, but if you can't read, you can't learn. And you can't learn by the third grade, you can't, you're then you're behind for the rest of OK for to, to the day, to graduating. We just had graduation last week, you know, and it's one of those things. So I'm going to stop talking right now because I'm so. That's, that's my two cents.
I enjoyed your passion, Ms. Frida. And so I can't say I disagree at all with what she says. I know the last two years I've watched the council very carefully. I have lobbied the council very carefully about passing the property tax. And the last two years would have been perfect years in which to pass that because they were not years that were fraught with a tornado and a pandemic. Now here we are. And so we're in a really, really tough budget situation and we have to make sure our students, the ones that we are voted to take care of, are indeed taken care of, and they are not taken care of unless they have a textbook. And I made that plea last year. I remember making that because everyone that I was speaking to in the Metro Council, I felt quite sure had a textbook and they were growing up in front of them. Yet, that's something that we don't provide our children today. I can't tell you how many teachers have told me they have a classroom set of textbooks. That, for me, is inexcusable. Every child needs a textbook. And someone mentioned earlier, you know, with our growing population, I think it was Dr. Williams, talked about our growing population of English language learners, they need a textbook. If we're going to, you know, provide equity for each and every student, students need textbooks. So I tend to agree with you, Frida, on that. Having said my soapbox, does anyone else have anything else to offer or questions?
Madam Chair, this is Rachel Lian.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that last year during our budget conversations, I was originally quite vocal about how we should not send a budget to council that was more than what we had been told we would get. And it is interesting, now that I have the tide to turn, I was real vocal on saying we needed to be a good, we need to show good faith and be a good player. And I felt like we weren't prepared to do the kind of, I will say lobbying that needed to be done to our council members and mayor. And some of my colleagues who are wanting to go along with the second budget convinced me otherwise, along mostly with MEA and teacher voice, of saying that we needed to ask for what we needed and not what we thought we could get. And so for that reason, I wanted to say that I will be voting against Ms. Sparing's motion to have the budget with the decrease of the 14.5. And wanted to say that particularly because I was so vocal last year.
Thank you, Ms. Elrod. Anybody else for any comments? Who was that?
This is Christian Bugs.
Sure.
Yeah, so I echo all of these sentiments. I just really want to put out a call to action and kind of a battle cry for community members, especially those who have been really lobbying us, advocating to us, you know, speaking with us, please advocate to the council. It's already been said that we should have, could have, would have had this property tax increase three years ago. We should have, would have, could have already have had the money that would have supported us through this time and for whatever political reasons we didn't. I think the saying in the community last year was that the council would never present another budget. They would never accept a second budget because it was an election year. And we lost that by one vote. The tide has definitely changed and we do have, what, a 20-person new council? They have almost all said that education is, if not their, their top priority, it's, it's close to it. And so I think it is on us to request this moral budget to make sure that we are putting all the, all of our needs on the table. I mean, you know, we keep coming back to this charter conversation and I do think at the very least, we have a new board or we have a board that's really, really focused on looking at, having a top-down view of schools and making sure that we acknowledge to charter applicants that, hey, I know you all were used to something different in the past, that there wasn't as much thoughtfulness or conversation around either opening or closing schools, but we are very intentional right now about looking at our budget and making sure that we partner with the schools that we have versus bringing in new applications. We just, we know that these, these dire restraints are impacting our kids. So I would ask us to consider voting for what we know we need, whether it's easy or not, but then I also want the community to come along with us.
Thank you, Ms. Bugs.
And hey, Anna, it's Melissa.
Hey, Melissa.
Hey, thanks, everybody, for your patience. I really appreciate it. I just wanted to echo what Chris said and that charter funding is not discretionary and that, to answer Rachel Lian's question, the statute that she cited applies to using negative fiscal impact as a rationale for denying a charter school, but it would not allow the board to walk back any charter schools that had previously been approved. But once those seats are approved, they come online consistent with the charter agreement. Sorry to circle the conversation back around and I appreciate y'all, but I wanted to hop in with those comments.
Thank you. Uh, Melissa, for that clarification.
Madam Chair, this is Jill. Yes, I, two things. One, I would like to, after hearing the discussion of my colleagues, I would like to withdraw my motion. And secondly, books are very important to children learning to read, but books don't teach children to read, and certainly textbooks don't teach children to read. Teachers teach children to read. So if we think that just buying textbooks is the solution, why haven't, why don't we have 100% of our students reading at grade level now? That is not the only factor. Books are important. Sometimes I'm not sure that textbooks are important as real good literature. Anyway, those are my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Sparing. Anybody else?
I do. I have a process question.
Yes, ma'am.
So since Ms. Sparing withdrew her, her motion on the second option.
On the first option.
First, it was the first option? Sorry, I was looking at the pages in the book, sorry. So I guess what's.
We don't have a motion on the floor. I'm open to accepting a motion.
Okay.
Are you making a motion, Ms. Player-Peters?
Yes, I'm trying to get mine, make sure I get the rights.
Got it.
I was looking through, I was looking through the sheets, I was going by the order. So I make a motion to approve the budget without the traditional budget, I guess, here, give me one quick second.
Excuse me, Ms. Player.
Yes.
My original motion was on option two.
Oh, my bad.
114.9. Option one is 939.4.
Oh, I apologize. You're right. Okay.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I'd like to make a motion to approve the operating budget of 29, 929,436 and 600 million for the fiscal year '21 budget.
Second?
All right. So we have a motion that has been made by Ms. Player-Peters to approve option number two for 929 million, and it's been properly seconded. Is there any more discussion? If we could get a well-called vote. Dr. Severe, are you back with us?
I am. I'm back, thank you. Dr. Gentry?
Aye.
Dr. Gentry votes aye, Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye, Ms. Spearing?
Aye.
Ms. Spearing votes aye, Ms. Bugs?
Aye.
Ms. Bugs votes aye, Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Bush votes aye, Ms. Player-Peters?
Aye.
Ms. Player-Peters votes aye, Ms. Pupa Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Pupa Walker votes aye, Ms. Froeg?
Aye.
Ms. Froeg votes aye, Ms. Shepherd?
Aye.
Shepherd votes aye. Madam Chair, you have nine ayes.
Thank you. Okay, so now we have our marching orders. We have approved a budget, an operating budget, 929 million, 45, I guess, million dollars. And so this is the budget that we will take with us Thursday at our budget meeting with the council, which is scheduled to be at 4:30. And it is a virtual meeting, so I would assume, Dr. Severe, that we'll be getting an invitation from you.
That invitation will not come from you, it will come through the council, I believe.
Okay, it's not the same product either, is it?
That's my understanding.
Okay. So we should be looking for that in the next day or two?
If you have not already received it. I'm not part of that process.
I don't think I have, but I'll take another look. And so I would encourage all of my colleagues to come with the same passion to that meeting that you came to this meeting. I love it. And we need to explain to them, and you're right, I've attended several of the virtual budget meetings that have been held, and we do have a new council. We have 20 new members, we have several female new members, we have several minority members, which I couldn't believe in a million years that we would have. But we need to, you know, reach out to each and every one of them and explain to them why educating our children is important. And the one response that irritates me the most with, well, how many children in a school system? Every child in this city will grow up to be an adult, we hope, and they're going to be members of our society. And whether they're your child, or my child, or somebody else's child, it is still our responsibility to provide them with an excellent educational opportunity. That's what we were entrusted to do as school board members. But we need to relay that responsibility to the people who are holding our purse strings. So I really do appreciate this robust discussion this afternoon. I do appreciate all the passion that I heard. Being a book person myself, I, you know, I have affinity in my heart for not just textbooks, but, you know, as Ms. Spearing said, a real live book. I have got one that I'm reading right now that I absolutely love, I just lost everybody's picture. But anyway, it's 4:30, Metro Council, bring your passion, bring your ideas, and unless anybody has anything else, this meeting is adjourned.